All right, it's five thirty. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the September twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three Madison City Planning Commission. Roll call, please. Hi, or here?
Here.
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 All right, we have a quorum. Next item is acceptance of the agenda. I understand we're gonna vote on a continuance for the reserve at the townhomes at Reserve Way. Okay, so we'll take that. But if there's anybody here for public comments, we'll go ahead and take public comments, but we won't be able to act on them tonight. So, uh, any other additions or corrections? All right, we'll move forward with the agenda as published. Uh, next item is approval of the minutes from the August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Any additions or corrections?
Move to, go ahead.
Move to approve.
Roll call. Hi.
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 It's Dane.
Hi.
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 All right, the minutes are approved. Next item is public comments for any item that is not on the agenda tonight. Um, if you have any, any item that it's pertains to an item on the agenda tonight, we'll ask that you hold your comments until we get to each item. We'll, we'll open those up individually for public comments at that time. Uh, regardless, we'll have you limit your comments to three minutes or less and state your name and address when you approach the podium. We do need to get you on microphones, so make sure you're up here when you start speaking. Uh, at this time, are there any public comments or any item that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing that there are none, we'll move forward with the first item under public hearings, and that is the Pension Row property. Request to rezone five point five acres from agriculture to R one B. Is the applicant here in which to address the commission? All right. Uh, come to microphone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and respected members of the planning commission. Uh, myself along with my friends own this parcel of land that is located at thirteen Pension Row, Madison, and, uh, this is parcel is five point five acres of land surrounded by single-family residential homes. And right now, its current classification is agriculture. We are requesting it to be rezoned from agriculture to R one B, which is a low density of the single-family residential homes. Uh, we think based on our surroundings, which are all single-family residential homes, this would be a good fit, uh, according to our opinion. Uh, hence, I kindly request the planning commission to approve this request.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, can you state your name so we have it for the record?
My name is Jilani Sheikh.
Okay.
I'm a member of Fusion Reality LLC.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Johnny? All right, we'll move forward with the city's presentation, and then we'll open up for public comments.
You see the picture of the property. It's on the west side of Pension Row, uh, and, uh, it's five point five acres. Uh, the request is from Ag, uh, what it is now to R one B. Uh, some characteristics of R one B is, uh, it's single-family detached. So this is, uh, for single-family detached lots, the minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet. The minimum lot size of the building line is one hundred feet. So, um, those are the, those are the, the characteristics of the lots. The applicant has, in his request to us, stated that, uh, I'd like to put five to ten units there. The property technically could take probably fifteen units. But once you look at that property and you start playing with it, it would be hard to get that many on there. Five to ten is probably more realistic with, with, with the lot width and the, and the lot sizes and stuff. But, um, right now, it's owned Ag, and, uh, you can put single-family residents there with Ag, but it's three-acre lots, so that's the difference you're getting with, with R one B. Uh, as you see, uh, the properties that surround it, the properties to the east are zoned R two. Uh, and, uh, you have some Ag on both, on both sides of this property, uh, with single-family dwellings on them, and then you have some industrial on the west side. There's some warehouses that are being constructed on that lot to the west. Um, the, uh, uh, future land use map calls for this as, uh, uh, C I, uh, central develop, uh, uh, central business district, which ironically, any zoning district is compatible with that. But, um, we had, have some inquiries about commercial and industrial, but because this property doesn't have access to Palmer, uh, we didn't feel like those type uses were really, uh, good for the property when they would have to come, oh, have only access to Pension Row. So, yes, a low-density, single-family residential zoning that's similar to that to the east, and even some of the Ag lots that are around it are more, more characteristic-wise, uh, related to R one B or R two or something like that than they are Ag. So we think it'll fit in nicely with the area, and we recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Johnny. Okay, at this point, we'll open up for public comments. Have, anybody else public comments? I'll have you come forward, state your name. Name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, and we'll, we'll take everybody in order as we have comments.
Carmelia Bradley, one oh nine, Pinson Row. My question is, what's gonna be, if, you know, already the average cost of these homes? Are we looking at low-income homes? We haven't given you much information yet.
No, that, and that's not a decision for this board.
Okay.
Um, and it, and I should also say that, uh, tonight is a recommendation to the city council for rezoning, so all we're doing tonight is making a recommendation to the city council.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're not privy to what's the cost of any homes that would be developed. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Well, I, I, I mean, I guess, I thought we could make comments after we motioned. How would a property on this, what, what is the, what is the plan for this to be able to access Pension Row and have ingress, egress out of this property?
Gerald Clark, Shell Engineering. There's two ways that, um, you could do this. Probably, probably infinite number of ways, but the two obvious ways are, one, just, uh, use the right-of-way on Pension Row and have, uh, lots that front Pension Row. Uh, the second way would be to get a cul-de-sac in there, and you could have one street coming off Pension Row. Uh, you could wind up with double-fronted lots if you did that, but it's a possibility. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? We have a motion in a second.
Um, I just, when I was reading, um, I wondered if the property owner might, uh, speak to this or affirm this, because it says that a maximum of fifteen units would be allowed, but the applicant's indication is five to ten lots, or five to ten units. And so I wondered if, if the applicant, uh, is willing to attest to that, that that is your intention of five to ten lots, and we won't be seeing fifteen lots coming up on the plat the next time we see this property? Five to ten.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, I had a motion in a second. All right, roll call. Hi.
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 All right, motion carries. Yes, go ahead.
For those interested in this, just for you to know, so we, what we did tonight was a recommendation to council. Sorry, pointed at you, but, you know, you're guilty. So, the council has the final decision on rezoning in the city, and then keep your eyes open for future agendas and whatever, because they have to come with site plans, and then they'll show how many houses, where they're gonna be, where the street's gonna come in, you know, they, they have to lay out the site plan. That we approved. So that'll, there's multiple steps. The next one is the council to actually approve what we recommended decision.
Thank you. All right, next item is three one two Palmer Road. Request to rezone approximately one acre from M two to M one. Is the applicant here in which to address the commission? All right, Johnny?
Uh, this property is kinda nearly right across from Madison Utilities, and it's at the, uh, southwest intersection of Palmer and Tribble. And, uh, this kinda started with the, what we call a, a non-residential zoning compliance form. We get those when somebody wants to get a business license and move in. They have to fill that out, and we check off the zoning, and we check off, uh, fire and buil- building check it as well. And, uh, they wanted to do a karate studio, uh, in that building, and, uh, it's not permitted in M two. Um, and it is permitted in M one. So, uh, one of the things they could do, and they, if they really wanted that in there, was downzone to M one. So they made the application to do that, and that's really why we're here. That's, that's ninety percent of, of why this started. It's not the only thing that you take into account, though, when you, uh, want to, to rezone property. Uh, you have to take into account which district's better, uh, more suitable, and that sort of thing. It is, in the long run, M one better than M two. And with this building, uh, the way it is, it's a, it's a building that has things. It's had a DAT studio in the past. It's had, uh, I think, a church in there. So this is an indoor thing, and it is much more suitable and less intense, uh, than what you normally get with M two. M two is your really intense commercial, uh, type enterprises that, that can go in that. So you're getting something a little bit better, and a little bit more compatible with, with surrounding area, and now you got Dublin Farms there. This will ensure that, uh, uh, that, uh, some of the things going in there would, even though it'll be industrial, could be less intense than, than what they would get. Um, there is some non-conformities. If you read the report, uh, with buffers and setbacks, and most of those non-conformities, uh, would exist now and do exist in, in, uh, in one, as far as the fifty-foot buffer and the fifty-foot setback against the right-of-ways. It was determined that this building probably came a little bit before Tribble Lane, so when it was built, it was probably much more compliant than it is now, and when that road come in. Because commercial lots require that the, uh, the right-of-way facing, or the, the, the lot property line facing the, the right-of-way, the front is the shortest one, no matter how the building is facing. It may dribble the front yard, and you see that's where the building is closest. So, so some things like that happen to make it non-conforming. But, uh, we feel like they, what they wanna do there is more suitable, uh, with the surrounding area, and what they can do there will be more suitable with, with M one than, than with, with, uh, M two. So we recommend approval.
All right, thank you, John. All right, at this point, I'll open up for public comments. All right, seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Roll call. Hi.
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 All right, motion carries. Next item is zoning tax amendment, childcare and medical uses in an urban center district. Uh, is the applicant, uh, Johnny, are you all, the city applicant for this one, or do we have a separate, uh? Okay, is anybody from Old Town Investments that wants to speak first?
Good evening. Uh, my name's Mathis Sneed with Mullins Engineering. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions or do whatever I can to help this thing get through.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Johnny?
Hey, this is a request, uh, to add, uh, childcare and medical offices to the U C district. Uh, the only area in town currently, uh, that has, uh, U C is in town Madison. You see the, the purple there. Those are the areas that, uh, from, uh, Waltryana to Zert that are included in the U C district. And, uh, so when, uh, the, the ordinance was first done, uh, childcare and, uh, and, uh, these type uses were not allowed because we wanted to maximize the land with more re- retail-producing type enterprises and, uh, businesses capable of, uh, supporting the residents. We felt like the residential there, and you know, we really tried to make the residential something that was not necessarily, uh, single-family families with a lot of kids and that sort of thing. The apartments were one and two bedrooms, which really suited, uh, young people or, or children, or people without children. But, you know, we have, uh, increased the tax base there. We have gotten a lot of restaurants. We've gotten a lot of, uh, hotels and different kinds of, uh, uh, retail in this area. And that coupled with the fact that, uh, we have, uh, several large employers, Hexagon, Kohler, Redstone in the area, a couple of large subdivisions, Mountain Brook and Edgewater. And, uh, we have convenient access from Zert through there to Waltryana that it makes sense that, uh, daycare would be, uh, would be something that, uh, would be used by those, uh, people that are employees, uh, nearby and those people that live nearby in the surrounding subdivisions. And the same is, it's the same for, uh, the office parks with, uh, medical offices. Uh, if you go downtown, and I know, uh, you've had, you got an elderly mom, and I had an elderly mom and dad, and it was, uh, we came to Huntsville a lot to go see specialists and stuff, and I remember taking them. And there's a lot of people that come in to use medical, uh, professionals in Huntsville and Madison, and, uh, it is, uh, it is, uh, it is, uh, something that would draw people and, and draw people to restaurants and other uses after they, they have their appointment. So we feel like these can be, uh, a, uh, advantage to the area, and, uh, they would be well-used in the area. So we would recommend adding these to, to the permitted uses in the, uh, industrial, uh, district. Um, the childcare, if you notice, there's one caveat, if you got your list of, of uses, is, uh, subject to three conditions that are the same conditions that are required in the commercial districts where these are allowed. They're, they're no different.
All right, thank you. All right, open up for public comments. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Uh, if I can, if, you lost, maybe I'm lost. I'm lost. Um, the whole reasoning behind excluding these things, and then you went to explain why now you recommend these things. It doesn't seem like anything's changed. Like you, we didn't want them in there because we wanted to preserve the ground for higher-traffic retail-type environment, whatever. I mean, this is developed as it, I guess, was somewhat sort of planned on. Why are we changing our mind, I guess?
Because a lot of that has come about. When it first came in, we, we didn't know what was going to, to walk to build in town Madison, but we do have a lot of restaurants, and we do have a lot, a, of retail tax-producing type businesses in there. So, so we can see, uh, and, uh, then when we were analyzing this, this time, uh, we not only realized that it wasn't just the people, uh, in town Madison, that, uh, that, uh, they were, uh, subdivisions, and they were em- employment centers outside of town Madison, uh, that, uh, could take advantage of these.
Is it a, is it a true statement that more-
Is it a, is it a true statement that more, that town, there's more development, there's more apartments and residential housing in town Madison as it developed than we thought there would be when it was originally fucked up?
Probably.
By a long shot.
It's a safe, yeah, it's a safe.
Okay. And it's not, it's not giant retail centers. It's a ton of apartments with things that support them stuck in between.
Number one, town Madison is twice the size it originally was when it was first envisioned, and it was envisioned more like the summit down in Birmingham than anything else. So that led to a lot of that thinking. Reality changed an awful lot uh, since the, the time of that first project uh, been, been brought uh, in front of council in the city.
And what is?
I th, I think your rationale is sound, and, and given what the reality of the um, town Madison is today, there's an awful lot of people living there, and, and you're right, there's a lot of people that, that are here that seek medical um, services. And, and you know, we like being able to stay in Madison and go into the, you know, go into the doctor or go into a medical facility and doing whatever. And, and you're right, there's re, restaurants, you know, come on down after your shot, you know?
It adds to the uh, it adds. It adds to the daytime, also the daytime employment uh, there. Uh, people who work in the doctor's offices and different things, uh, will utilize those restaurants to eat lunch and things like that. That's important as well, because we don't have a lot of that.
Isn't there a dentist's office there already?
There is. It's in the, I think that's in the P and D, if I'm not mistaken. The ti, town, there, there's two districts, and there's two zoning districts in town Madison. One is UC, and then the other is a traditional town neighborhood. That's where, that kind of that little complex there is where the dentist is.
Any more comments or get a motion?
Move to approve.
Roll call? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item is Reserve Way, uh, Town Homes, final plat for twelve residential lots on one point six four acres. My understanding is we're gonna vote to continue. But uh, yeah, as I say, let's uh, I'll open, go ahead and open it up for public comments if anybody's here to speak to it before we vote to continue. Anybody here uh, to speak to the Re, uh, Reserve Way Town Homes? All right, seeing that there are none, I need a motion to continue, and this is to the next meeting.
No move.
Second.
Roll call? Aye.
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 All right, next item is vacation of right-of-way. Griggs Road and Concord Drive, request to vacate one point five one acres, unimproved right-of-way for Griggs Road and Concord Drive. Is the applicant here in which to address the commission? All right, Johnny?
This is a request we've been working on for several months, uh, trying to go through all the uh, requirements that the state has to vacate right-of-way. And uh, this property, uh, the area that, of the vacation you see in yellow, and this is just east, really just east of uh, Hughes Road. You know where the Catholic Church is there. You see it, Saint John's, and then you see Mandolin Drive and Maximilian. Uh, and uh, this right-of-way is kind of tucked in behind that. Very hilly area. Uh, we did a lot of research on this, and uh, uh, the Concord right-of-way existed at least on a nineteen ninety-eight zoning map. We found Vennett's uh, where Griggs Road, that, that extra right-of-way on Griggs Road was dedicated to Madison County when it was in the county in nineteen sixty-nine. Uh, we uh, did some modifications where we vacated and accepted some right-of-way in ninety-four there. Uh, this property was up for auction, I believe, a, a year, or maybe year and a half ago, and uh, it was bought uh, by a lot, three of the lots was bought by S and A, S and A Holdings. And uh, that gentleman wants to uh, uh, basically vacate the right-of-way, along with uh, Danny Sisson, who owns the property you see there to the west. And that would uh, that property would split between the different owners and uh, go back uh, to them. And uh, I believe that the owner of S and L Holdings wants to build one house on, on, on those three lots. You'll probably see a certified plat at some point where they consolidate it once this happens. And uh, he'll come back with a building permit at some point. Uh, it's been right-of-way for a long time. Nothing has ever happened there. We've uh, reached out, as we do, and Mr. Seaver knows with vacations. Uh, we have to get, uh, they go, go before council a, a lot for easement vacations, and.
I like vacations.
Sure.
I was gonna say, I like vacations every time I go on the beach or something.
Uh, so we have uh, all the entities that could use an easement or use the right-of-way in this case have to be notified and check the box that they don't need it, and we have uh, done that. And uh, we got, went through all of our due diligence. Nobody needs it. Everybody's okay with it being vacated. Uh, it'll only affect as far as uh, being frontage the properties that were applicants, so we would recommend approval. Quick curiosity, how big is it altogether? You know? I did, uh, it's one point, it's one point five one acres, one thousand sixty-six feet for Griggs Road right-of-way, two hundred and eighty feet for Concord. I just meant the lasso around this whole, all the properties involved. Oh, uh, the surveyor's here, and he may know, but I don't know. It, that, it ain't nothing. Okay. Good enough, I was just curiosity. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll open up for public comments. All right, seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call? Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. At this point, public hearing is closed, and we have one last administrative item to deal with, and that is the extension of time for Madison Branch Phase One bonds. Is that correct?
Oh.
Is this for bonds, or, oh, I'm sorry, uh, extension of time for?
It is the extension of uh, the, the preliminary plat. Their one year has run out, and you'll just be re-upping them for another year.
Okay, we'll give them an additional year for preliminary plat. All right, can I get a motion?
Move to, uh, move to approve the extension request.
All right, roll call? Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.